I'd like to call this meeting to order on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six P M., the meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. And I'd like to start with having all of us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to do a roll call of the governing board members who are present. We have two who are remote on Teams and one here in person. I'll start roll call. Dr. Patinsky?
Matthew Patinsky.
Ms. Carney?
Amy Carney.
And Mike Sharkey. Three members are present. We have a quorum. I'd like to start our next item, which is the approval of the agenda that's been published. Any adjustments? All right. Then I need a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion. For all votes today, since we have folks remote, I'm going to do roll call votes. So there is a motion seconded to approve the agenda as is. Dr. Patinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Aye.
An aye from me. Approved three zero. Thank you. I'd like to read a statement about meeting decorum for today. Citizens attending and/or participating in Scottsdale Unified School District meetings, either in person, virtually, or telephonically, are required to observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to members of the governing board and staff. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from members of the audience, yells, outbursts, and/or other disruptions are not permitted. All right. Our next item is student and staff recognitions and celebrations.
Well, good evening, Vice President Sharkey and members of the governing board who are in the cloud and all of the people who are here in the audience. This is one of our favorite parts of the evening, when we get to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students and staff who embody the excellence of Scottsdale Unified School District. Our first celebration honors a remarkable individual, a PETA Award winner and a Time Magazine Kid of the Year finalist, who continues to impress with achievement after achievement. To present this well-deserved recognition, please join me in welcoming our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Melissa Saccos.
Governing Board members, I'll just get a little closer here. Thank you, Dr. Menzel, and good evening, Vice President Sharkey, governing board members, Dr. Menzel and Mrs. Wagner. I'm elated to be able to introduce Jordan to you. So, Jordan, why don't you come on up? This is Jordan Cicado, and I'm also going to invite up her principal, who she just met this evening, Principal Noonan, Scottsdale Online Learning. Jordan Cicado is certainly a standout high school student. As I mentioned, she attends Scottsdale Online Learning, and I'd like to help celebrate her recent accomplishments. Jordan was named Student of the Month by the Arizona Board of Education, and for good reason. She's the founder of Loz for Paws LLC, a youth-led nonprofit with a mission to bring awareness to the malpractice and mistreatment of animals nationwide. Just last year, her organization raised eighteen thousand dollars to support animal welfare in Maricopa County. Yes, we can celebrate. She's also jump-starting her legislative career early. She authored legislation to ban the sale of animal-tested cosmetics in Arizona. She then partnered with Senator John Kavanaugh and the Animal Defense League to bring this bill to life. Wow. In recognition of her advocacy, she received the PETA Hero to Animals Award last year. Jordan continues to make a meaningful impact, not just for our community, but for those who can't speak for themselves. We are incredibly proud to have her as part of the S U S D family. Principal Noonan, would you like to say a few words about Jordan?
Thank you, Dr. Saccos, and good evening, governing board, Vice President Sharkey, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner, and those of you in the cloud, and of course, our fantastic community members. You guys must have known I was going to be here. We've got a really great crowd, so thank you. So, it's true, I met Jordan for the first time this evening, but we did have a chance to chat, and all I'm going to add to what Dr. Saccos has shared is that we're all going to be hearing about this outstanding young woman in the future. Her level of competence and her confidence and goals are crystal clear, and I have no doubt she's going to activate every single one of them as she continues along her education career and becoming a member of our society. It's just going to raise the love of humanity for all of us. So, I'm thrilled that she's with Scottsdale Online. She's a great advocate for our online program, and I'm so happy to be able to celebrate here tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jordan, and I'm going to give Principal Noonan the honor of, and please accept the challenge coin he's going to give you, in recognition of all of your accomplishments.
We're very proud and look forward to seeing of your future accomplishments. Next up, we have a group of elementary students who are following in Jordan's footsteps. They are from Pima Elementary School, and they can already say their artwork has been published. To present this well-deserved recognition, please welcome our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Christine Bono.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel, and good evening, Vice President Sharkey, governing board members in the cloud, Mrs. Wagner, and our S U S D friends and family for joining us. I'd like to invite up Principal Hodo and any reps from Pima that he has coming forward. As we've already witnessed, as we've already witnessed, we have some incredible students, and I'm proud to celebrate another group of our young achievers. Let's talk about Pima Elementary School's graphic design class from last school year. You heard that right. Our elementary kids are learning graphic design. They're not just learning, they're making a real impact. These students are being recognized across Arizona for their creative excellence. They were selected to design the cover of the Arizona Department of Education's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center's Guidance Handbook. It's a publication that reaches schools statewide. It all started when the A D E, Doreen Candelaria, was on-site reviewing their campus to ensure program compliance, and while on-site, she was captivated by the artwork from the graphic design students inviting them to take on this prestigious design project. The class jumped into action. They worked collaboratively to design a masterpiece that will be seen by schools statewide. We really could not be more proud of this incredible achievement, and we'd like to honor Pima with the challenge coin.
We do appreciate the artwork and seeing our students' talent displayed for all in Arizona to see on the front of the Twenty-First Century Guidance Handbook. So, thank you and congratulations. We have one more relatively large celebration this evening, and it is about our Blue Zone Schools, and we have a number to celebrate this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Christine to introduce the Blue Zone Celebration.
So, we're lucky that we get to recognize not just creating a successful learning environment in our schools, but also a campus culture that prioritizes health and nutrition in everything they do. I'd love to take this opportunity to introduce you to our four newest S U S D campuses who successfully undertook this incredible mission, and they have just been named Blue Zone Schools. So, when I call your school's name, representatives, come on up, and we'll give you a round of applause. From Hopi Elementary, led by Principal Plankovic. We have the team from Cochise Elementary School, led by Principal Miller. We have the team from Redfield Elementary School, led by Principal Rand. And Mountainside Middle School, led by Principal Hardy. This achievement is part of S U S D's ongoing initiative to promote health and nutrition district-wide, and these schools are proudly leading the charge. Important to note, Coronado High School was also named a Blue Zone School, but we're going to recognize them next month so their representatives could join us and be celebrated appropriately. So, just briefly going over each school, and then I'm going to turn it over to our folks from Blue Zones. Hopi Elementary's commitment to belonging, mindfulness, and whole-brain learning has fostered a strong culture of well-being for both students and staff. Two key initiatives that helped them earn Blue Zone status are their school garden and their therapy dog program, both aimed at making a lasting impact on the health and happiness of their students. For Cochise Elementary, they launched an initiative encouraging healthier lifestyles for all members of the community. This includes nutritious meals, increased physical activity, and meaningful social connections. Cochise is committed to creating an environment where students thrive physically, emotionally, and academically. Mountainside Middle recently earned its Blue Zone accreditation by embracing a range of initiatives that promote health, sustainability, and community connection. Mountainside launched a student-led water bottle recycling program, replaced unhealthy snack rewards with P T O-sponsored quarterly cart offerings, including school swag and nutritious options, and is currently planning the development of their school garden. Redfield Elementary solidified this prestigious designation through numerous initiatives to improve the whole-child wellness campus. One highlight is their Chef in the Garden Blue Watermelon Project, where students engage in hands-on learning about growing, preparing, and enjoying fresh foods. Campus has also made a significant change moving recess before lunch, and this simple shift, backed by research, can reduce food waste by up to thirty percent and encourage students to eat more fruits and vegetables. We do want to invite, again, my friends and colleagues from the Blue Zone Projects to the podium to say a few brief words on the schools for the work they've done together.
Thank you, Christine. I had the privilege, my name's Chris Byall, and I'm an organization and well-being coordinator for Blue Zones, and I had the privilege of working with three of these schools. So, I also just wanted to call out one best practice that was unique to these guys. So, Cochise Elementary, I did want to do a shout-out to their P E teacher, Ms. Bradley. She created a fabulous health and wellness website that is just filled with resources for brain breaks and nutrition education and social and emotional learning, and she shared this out with the teachers, and as a result, every single classroom at Cochise uses a movement-based brain break every day. And then also with Redfield, I worked with them as well. For over ten years, their fourth and fifth graders have been connecting with residents at nearby retirement homes through their grand pal, pen pal program, and all year long, these students with their senior pen pals are exchanging letters, and then in May, they come together to play games and celebrate the friendship in person. And then last but not least, we have Mountainside Middle School, and they had a P T O member that taught their student government students stress management and breathing techniques, and now these students share these practices during their morning announcements, bringing calm and focus to the entire school every day. So, congratulations to these three schools for their creativity, commitment, and lasting impact, and I'll turn it over to my colleague Tara.
Hello. So, I'm representing Hopi, and at Hopi, students are pickling, they're planting, harvesting, preparing, and enjoying produce from their very own school garden. They connect to the community through programs like Feed My Starving Children. They keep their bodies moving with groups like Girls on the Run. They do a music, Mindful Minute, and even partake in non-food birthday celebrations. At their core, Hopi fosters and cultivates well-being for their students and the community at large. So, a big round of applause for all four of our approved schools.
Thank you for those heartfelt words, and really thank you for partnering with us to make our schools a healthier place. To our principals and our representatives from each school, the students may not realize how much you have to put into this to make their campus healthier and more sustainable, but we do, and we want to thank you. We've got challenge coins here for you and your representatives, and I want to give you another round of applause for all that you do.
Congratulations to our schools for this recognition. We're, more than a third of our schools are Blue Zones approved, and we're going to have a number more to celebrate this year. We're just grateful for your commitment to ensuring that our students live healthy lives and we can maximize their learning through inculcating good habits and behaviors. Thanks to our Blue Zone friends as well, we appreciate you. And that concludes our celebrations this evening.
Our next section of the agenda is the governing board reports. I'll ask the other board members if they've got reports, starting with Dr. Patinsky.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm sharing my screen, although I don't know that the room will have the benefit of that. I regret that I'm not there in person, and I am at a event related to competency-based personalized learning and math, so hopefully I'll bring back some insights from that, and for better or for worse, for Dr. Menzel. I have already shared a few of insights to Dr. Menzel. I'm looking forward to being at Desert Mountain High School this month, visiting with the A I Club, and helping them both bring in speakers about A I in education technology, as well as, I think they aspire, to help the district develop its next-generation A I policy. And with that, just want to express my gratitude for all the work that went into kicking off this academic year so well.
Thank you, Dr. Patinsky. Ms. Carney, comments?
Thank you. I'm good. I don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And then from my side, a couple things. I visited Mojave Middle School two weeks ago, so thank you, Principal Ferrero, for taking the time to talk with me and show me around the school. I really enjoy school visits and talking with the principals and seeing what they're doing. Last week, I went to the Chap Soaro football game. First time going to a football game. My kids were Chap for four years, and K through twelve, their whole career, and I never went to a football game, so that was my first one. Congrats to Soaro for the win. Sorry, Chap. I appreciated time on both sides and seeing Dr. Menzel and being able to be on the sidelines to see a pretty cool interception right in front of us, so that was good. And then I went to the Arizona School Board Association Law Conference last week, so I wanted to thank the district for paying for me to attend, as well as my fellow board members. I feel much more informed about the myriad of legal issues that we face as a school board, and I feel more educated to be able to respond, so that was very, very valuable. Thank you. Next, we have superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Vice President Sharkey. Just a few more things to put on everyone's radar. Tomorrow, Scottsdale Unified School District will be hosting our second annual Back-to-School Mental Health Resource Fair at the Mojave District Annex, Rooms A and B, beginning at five P M. It was great to celebrate the four new Blue Zone Schools here today, and as Dr. Bono mentioned, Coronado has also been approved. That celebration will be here on the campus at eleven o'clock to make it official, and then we'll celebrate them at a future governing board meeting. Scottsdale Unified School District will also be the host of the A S B A Maricopa County Meeting on September twenty-ninth. That dinner meeting that will welcome representative, school board members from across Maricopa County will begin at five o'clock at the M D A. And then our special meeting, final special meeting of September will be on the thirtieth, but instead of being at the Mojave District Annex, it will be here at six o'clock with a focus on interest-based negotiation, and the board will have the opportunity to have direct conversations with our four different associations. So, we're looking forward to exciting things as we quickly move through the month of September.
Thank you so much. Our next section is public comments. So, for public comments today, I'm going to read a statement in a second. We've got eighteen speakers. I will call up the name of the speaker, and I'll also call up the name of the person who is on deck. Everyone has two minutes to speak, and the public comment statement is in compliance with open meeting law. The governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters raised during public comments that are not on the agenda. However, the governing board members may respond to direct criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or that a matter be placed on a future agenda. Public comments will be conducted in accordance with Policy B E D H. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes. The screen will indicate the time remaining. Please be prepared to close your comments and relinquish the floor at the conclusion of your time. The board asks that each speaker please introduce yourself by stating your name and whether you live within our school district for clarity on the record. We thank you for your time and attendance here this evening and your cooperation in following the meeting decorum and protocols. I will read the name of the speaker. When you hear a name, please come up to the podium, and I'll read the name of the next speaker to be ready on deck. Once you start speaking, your time will start. So, thank you for following these comments. Thank you for introducing yourself so we know your relationship to the district, and we will start with Ms. Riley DeFusco first and Jacob Weinberg on deck. Do you need to turn the mic on for them, or, there we go. Green light, you're good.
Good evening. My name is Riley DeFusco, and I'm a student at Chaparral High School. On August fifth, S U S D Food Services gave a presentation of their summer accomplishment. The team was able to deliver over two hundred thirty-five thousand meals to children facing food insecurity. During this presentation, Senator Warner interrupted through her microphone, remarking, "This is what I have to listen to. She is, like, morbidly obese." Senator Warner, you hold a significant position of power within our district. You represent the values this community strives to uphold. Your words not only reflect your own morality, but the commitment you choose to provide S U S D with. Your remark sends a message that it is acceptable to degrade someone's identity down to their appearance and not of their character. As a student of S U S D, I'm equally ashamed and appalled by your actions. Regardless of the context, your words were inappropriate, demeaning, and cruel. Accountability holds significance, something I'm sure you would agree with. However, your failure to issue However, your failure to issue a public apology contradicts that very juvenile principle. Moving forward, I hope you understand the words you choose to say do have an impact on this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jacob Weinberg. On deck is Eric Marsing.
Hi, I'm Jacob Weinberg, I am a Scottsdale resident and board member, superintendent. Thank you for having me speak. Also, for Board Member Warner, when we volunteer for service to serve the community, our responsibility is to make those institutions better, not tear them apart. Bullying tactics and derogatory language are unacceptable and tear these institutions apart. If it's unacceptable for these students in the room to do this, why is it acceptable for a board member to? I demand that Board Member Warner make a public apology for her comments. And if not, if she doesn't have the integrity to hold herself accountable, I demand that the superintendent and the board reprimand her and require the same, the same training, the same remedial training you would give to students that make these comments. Thank you for your time.
Eric Marsing, up next, Emmy Cardella.
Eric Marsing, Scottsdale resident, alumni of Chaparral, well, graduate, but I went there my first couple of years. So thank you, members of the board. I am here because of my concern regarding Board Member Warner. When I read about her denigrating a well-acclaimed staff member, I had to speak up, it's not something I choose to do or like to do. Although, my understanding is that she didn't realize that she was on a mic, a hot mic that has no bearing on the unprofessionalism and the cruelty of her comments. As other speakers have said, this is something we would hold our school administrators, our teachers, our students accountable for if they were to make a similar comment on a school campus. And so, that's why I'm calling for her to resign, because I don't think that she represents us as a community or this school district appropriately. Thank you.
Emmy Cardella, on deck, Rebecca Ryerson.
Good evening, governing board, Dr. Menzel and Ms. Gladys. I guess, oh, my name's Emmy Cardella, I am an SUSD parent and proud Don, and I suppose I'll be the first one to point out that Ms. Warner is not here. Her name tag is there, so I'm assuming she planned on attending and got wind that we would all be here to confront her, and she chose not to attend. So, in line with her character. So I'm here for the same reason all of these other speakers are. Her comments were egregious. I personally was not surprised by her disrespecting staff member and speaking, you know, denigrating them. I've heard, seen her do it from the dais on many occasions. What's really even worse, I believe, is how she is telling people that she's been, that she wasn't talking about that. She was misinterpreted, and she's lying and claiming that that is not what she said when we all heard her loud and clear. So Ms. Carner, if you watch this, I'm sorry, Ms. Warner, if you watch this, you are a terrible board member, and our students deserve better, and we will all continue working to ensure that you will not be re-elected. Given that I have a minute left, I will comment on the last board meeting that you all had, the study session, where you discussed the WIGs, and it was an amazing conversation, and I just really appreciate the board members bringing their thoughtful analysis. And again, like this year, you've all been taking on some really serious issues in the district, you know, again, schools around us are closing schools, making very tough decisions, and I love that you guys aren't turning away from that, but you're really approaching it head-on. And I'll point out in that meeting too, there was over two hours of great discussion, and Board Member Warner said nothing the entire time. She had zero comments and did not contribute to the conversation whatsoever, so thank you.
Rebecca Ryerson, up next, Sarah Kuchenbecker.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Ryerson, I'm a parent of four in the community. Thank you for allowing me to speak. To the governing board, as you know, I was one of the first people to send an email to the board member, Ms. Warner, asking that she apologize for her insensitive and incredibly demeaning comments to Ms. Bilbury. I asked Dr. Lewis, as board president, to issue an apology on behalf of the board, condemning such cruel language, as well as making it clear that this behavior from a leader in our community would not be tolerated and was potentially in violation of the code of ethics for governing board members. To my knowledge, no apology has been made to Ms. Bilbury from either Ms. Warner or on behalf of the governing board. I find it disappointing and frustrating, and my ad lib here is I find it even more that I came to the meeting to address it face-to-face, and she's not even here to address it. The part that continues to nag me is her comment of, "Can you believe I have to be listening to this?" What was the point that was so annoying? The fact that Ms. Bilbury took time out of her summer to ensure thousands of people with food insecurities were fed? The fact that it costs nothing for our district because she, of her ability to think creatively about funding the sources? Or is it just that she no longer wants to participate in the board meetings in the first place? And if that is the case, why? Because you don't have the, you don't value the role that a governing board member has in our district? Or you don't value SUSD, or the administrators who are working tirelessly to improve the district? Or you don't value the diversity of the population and the needs of the students within the district? Or you're just not into it anymore? Whatever the reason, I would ask that you reevaluate your role on the board, and I'm sure we can find someone to assume your seat who wants to be in the role and who will actively work hard for the students.
Sarah Kuchenbecker, up next, Jeff Ratai.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Kuchenbecker, I live in North Scottsdale, and I have two children. I am here tonight to teach my children how to stand up to a bully who courageously decided to skip the meeting tonight. Step one, you must not be afraid of a bully, and I am not afraid of Karen Warner. But of course, I am unlikely to be one of her targets. After all, I am white, I am heterosexual, and I am physically fit. As we know, she has quite a history of diminishing people who look or think differently than she does. A history that includes viciously mocking an employee of the district that she represents. A history that includes intimidating qualified teachers in her district by developing a narc line. Yes, you see, her victims are folks under her power who may be scared away from standing up to her. How very convenient for her, and how typical of a bully. Step two to stand up to a bully, don't let them twist the truth about their bullying. After tonight's meeting, I think it's very likely Karen Warner will try to say that the recent hot mic incident was all a big misunderstanding. I think she will try to claim that her words were taken out of context and not meant for the employee who was speaking, whose words should have commanded her respect and attention. Oh yes, I think she will attempt to gaslight all of us and do anything other than take full responsibility for her actions. People make mistakes, and we can forgive mistakes when there is accountability and sincere apology. But Karen has chosen silence, and I am certain her next step will be deflection. I was hoping she would prove me wrong. I was hoping she would be here tonight to offer a sincere apology for her actions. Instead, her absence proves the point I came to make tonight. Karen Warner is not fit to serve. Our children and valued staff deserve better than a bully, and she must resign.
Next up, Jeff Ratai, and then after that Suzanne Thune.
Every paid head coaching position is listed in the governing board's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, and each has a long list of duties and responsibilities. I was a paid head coach for seven years. Most of those years, I did multiple sports. I stood at this very microphone and talked about the corruption in Scott Menzel's office. Shortly after, during the first week of 7th grade flag football at Kokopah, the principal came out on the field deeply disturbed and told me, Dr. Menzel's office just informed him that if I did not sign a volunteer coaching contract, the season for those 32 families was canceled. I knew it was retaliation since my brother, the 8th grade coach, would be paid. I coached those boys for the next 15 weeks and never missed a practice or game in 110-degree heat. We had a great season, there was a lady hanging around my practicing games, she never coached in her life. The principal told me she was thinking of being the athletic director next year and wanted to observe two great coaches in action. Some days, she wore a dress in the stifling heat, and I found out at the end of the season that this lady was paid my $1,800 coaching stipend. But that's not the worst of it. The district lawyer admitted to me that Mrs. Crozier authorized a contract that lists this lady as the 7th grade flag football coach and lists the duties and responsibilities that I did. But that's not, listen, I don't care what you do with people that are cooking the books, although it certainly raises the question of how many other phantom coaches are on the payroll. You can have Gus Rosenfeld send me all the threatening letters you want and keep telling me I miss the statute of limitations and sue the district, until I am paid my $1,800 coaching stipend, I'm not going anywhere. Dr. Lewis, as I said at the last board meeting, the worst thing you can say about someone is they don't care. You called me into an executive board meeting, I no sooner sat down and you voted to tell me to go home. That's not leadership, that is cowardice. You need to resign.
Next up is Suzanne Thune, after that, Ilya Yango.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Thune, I have two kids in SUSD. Ms. Warner, your comment during the recent presentation on the summer meals program, specifically referring to what you had to listen to, was dismissive and disrespectful. It undermined a vital initiative that provides free nutritious meals to food insecure children and dismissed the hard work of an entire department committed to serving our community. The SUSD Nutrition Services Team works tirelessly, often without recognition, to ensure children receive meals that they may not otherwise have access to. Publicly minimizing their efforts not only discredits their work, but also sends a harmful message about the value we place on feeding hungry kids. This kind of remark has no place in a professional setting, especially one that is tasked with supporting programs that make a measurable difference in the lives of students and their families. Respect for staff and their contributions should be the baseline standard in all of our discussions. The impact has extended well beyond the meeting itself. The words created a hostile and unsafe environment, causing lingering emotional distress, diminished confidence, and anxiety about future interactions in this space. Our staff and leaders deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. While differences of opinion are part of public service, personal attacks have no place in this setting. This experience must be recognized for the harm it caused and should serve as a reminder of the responsibility we all share to uphold professionalism, civility, and respect in every interaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thune. Up next, Ilya Yango, on deck, Mary Beth Klein.
Hello, I'm Ilya Yango. I'm a senior at Desert Mountain High School, have gone there all four years, and I'm here to ask Board Member Warner to resign. Today, we were in Spanish class, and we were talking about what our ideal world would look like, and me and my classmates said that it would be, other than being not so hot as it is here, it would be having, living with diverse people, and to, for the reason to learn from other people's cultures and to appreciate these people. But what Board Member Warner, how she acts, not just the comment that she made of the person that works here, but her past actions show that she is not in favor of having a diverse community for Scottsdale Unified School District. And for that reason, I want her to step down.
Thank you. Up next, Mary Beth Klein, on deck, Catherine Martin.
Good evening, my name is Mary Beth Klein, I live within the SUSD school district boundary, and I am the mother of three children at Arcadia High School. I have a senior, a sophomore, and a freshman. I am here to ask the Board of Governors to consider moving the final schedule for the year-end for 2025-2026 school year. Right now, graduation is on Thursday, May 21st, and finals span Wednesday, May 20th through Friday, May 22nd, which puts graduation right in the middle of finals week, which makes it difficult for parents with multiple kids to celebrate graduation. In addition, I can't speak for other schools, but I know at Arcadia, the National Honor Society participates in graduation, as does our band. So I would ask that you give this matter some due consideration and consider adjusting the final schedule, perhaps from Tuesday to Thursday, so we don't have graduation in the middle of finals. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Catherine Martin, on deck, Jaclyn Buckley.
Hello, SUSD governing board members and Dr. Menzel, my name is Catherine Martin. I live in Scottsdale, and I am the parent of two children who have attended SUSD schools since kindergarten, and I still have one child at Desert Mountain High School. I have been witness to Board Member Warner's divisive attacks on SUSD values since she was elected. Her recent hot mic comments are not an isolated slip, they are part of an ongoing pattern of discrimination, censorship, and disregard for Scottsdale students, families, teachers, and staff. As the mother of a child in the LGBTQ+ community, I do not appreciate her contempt for diversity, equity, and inclusion. She has attempted to ban books and promote PragerU's controversial right-wing propaganda in our schools. Warner is a divisive elected official and has clearly violated the SUSD governing board code of ethics. We deserve better. Warner should resign. Thank you.
Up next, up next, Jaclyn Buckley, on deck, TJ Buckley.
Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Jaclyn Buckley, I'm a math teacher at Chaparral High School. I come to you tonight concerned about the wildly important goal pertaining to moving Algebra I to 8th grade. There are a few reasons I'm concerned, the first being having qualified math teachers in the younger grades in order to accelerate the curriculums to be able to teach Algebra I in 8th grade. The second concern is without a solid math foundation, students will struggle even more later on in their math career. Compounding this rocky foundation with accelerating their math education will only snowball their math deficiencies. As it is, students are coming to high school below grade level. Currently, currently, the students I have coming to geometry are between, on average, a 5th through 7th grade level. And that's based on the IXL data for this year. Moving Algebra I to 8th grade will also force students to take AP Calculus or AP Statistics, and many of them will not even need this in college. Finally, students coming from out of district or out of state may not meet the requirements for Algebra I in 8th grade, therefore needing to still offer it at the high school level. Also, 8th graders that fail Algebra I in 8th grade would either need to repeat Algebra I for the foundation, or would be moved along without that foundation, compounding those This would also then hinder their GPAs. I ask you to reconsider this goal, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, TJ Buckley, after that, Dr. Teresa Leba Ruiz.
Hi, I'm TJ Buckley, president of Scottsdale Education Association, proud SUSD parent and proud teacher at Mountside Middle School. Tonight, I want to focus on the treatment of staff by community members. We've had a dramatic increase of intimidation and harassment of staff by community members. Whether it's 100 emails to teachers in three weeks, threats to come to the school every day and bother us, showing up in classrooms unannounced, or shouting curse words or dictator nicknames at administrators, this treatment must stop. When a staff member has to worry about a confrontation with community members while also securing a classroom, sorry, for the 20 to 200 students that they work with each day, they are unable to focus on the students and their needs. We are calling on SUSD through interest-based negotiations to implement a policy to define defer, to define and defer harassment and mistreatment of staff. Last month, I addressed this board to remind you that you work as a team. No decision of yours works unilaterally. There is no such thing as an independent act. Independently, you have influence- Independently, you have influence; together, you have power. I expect that you will hold each other accountable to the same standards that you hold staff. Your actions have consequences. Many of these consequences are felt by the staff of this district that show up to work every day. We, your employees, are tired of being attacked, in part due to your actions and inactions. This may be a twice-a-month gig for you, but leadership isn't.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. Teresa Leyba Ruiz, after that, Eric Kerland.
Good evening, Vice President Sharkey, members of the Board, Superintendent Menzel, and members of our community. My name is Dr. Terry Leybar Ruiz, and I currently reside in the Roosevelt District. However, tonight, I am here as a former S U S D student and a career educator in Arizona. I want to speak directly to the harm caused by Ms. Corinne Warner. When a governing board member uses her position to demean, belittle, or disparage a respected employee of a district, it is not simply a personal attack. It undermines the trust and dignity of our entire school system. As a teacher, administrator, and former president at Glendale Community College, I have witnessed 35 years of great behavior and few instances of bad behavior, where each of these individuals have been held accountable, and the behavior was always corrected. To the students in our district, you matter. To the staff who continue to show up every day with professionalism and care, we see you, we support you, and we thank you. And to this board, I urge you to take seriously the responsibility you carry to protect the integrity of public education and the dignity of every person who makes Scottsdale Unified a place of learning and growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Eric Kerland, after that, Shayna Joffe.
Good evening, my name's Eric Kerland. My wife and I are retired from the district, though by half-century. Our kid has graduated and started through the district, and we are still homeowners in the district. I came to just say hello to Nick Noonan, but I signed in on a computer, and apparently that's why I'm here. No, I want to apologize for that. I actually have something to say. And see, Mrs. Warner, apologies aren't that difficult. It really isn't. I worked on the strategic mission and values, and spent many months doing that. And one of the questions was, how are we going to get this through to all of the staff and students? And we talked about it starting at the top. And if I had eyes that could read that, I'd read you the words of empathy, of integrity, of trust. And it all comes down to those things. And I wonder if this actually ties into what Mr. Buckley was talking about, and the ability of some parents, hopefully a very minor amount of community members, that feel it's okay to do those kinds of things to staff. So it's tough enough being somebody today in this kind of world where everybody's looking at you and your appearance, and there's a Botox industry, and there's fillers, and there's weight loss. I mean, this is a billion-dollar thing. But for you to kind of come out and say something like that, it's really simple. Make a public apology and move on. And not one of those if-then statements. If I said something that might have bothered you, then I'm really sorry. No, take a deep-throated, self-reflective apology. And I believe that the board also has to come out and have a statement about this. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Shayna Joffe, on deck, Elijah.
Well, my name is Shayna Joffe. I have two students in the district, and it's pretty hard to follow Eric Kerland. And I so appreciate you all for having us here, and for all you do in the district, and tell you that, if I may say, there are so many of us here that are so proud of our district, and proud of our schools, our students, our teachers. And of course, I had prepared my notes to speak to Warner, but I threw those out because she's not here, though it is apparent she was supposed to be here. So I'll speak to the cameras and let you know that what I have in my hand is 67 pages. 67 pages of names, which amount to 1,522 signatures, and growing by about 10 signatures every half hour. So I am interested, if we did that in 14 days, just imagine what that's going to look like in one month. Warner, it's time for you to go. This was the final straw for the community. Again, this is community members as well as educators, redacted names. They didn't ask me to redact it, but I just felt like, just in case there was retaliation, I chose to redact their names, but I included the educators' schools and that they are employees here. And I will tell you, we're tired of Warner. We've watched her up here for the last couple of years, completely unprepared, on a meeting basis. She says she doesn't get that information, yet everybody else did. Oh, well, I'm not privy to that. And time and time again, she can't vote because she's not prepared. She doesn't ever contribute anything of quality. She obviously does not care about our district, and we want her to resign. So we will be back, Warner. We will see you next time. You will have to face us.
Thank you. Up next is Elijah, and on deck, Erin Nicoletti. Hello, Elijah.
As a strong, as a child and a very strong reader, I find that banning books is kind of like what happened in Fahrenheit 451, and that if we ban books, I think we will go to a dystopian, probably even worse than Fahrenheit. And, yeah.
Thank you, Elijah. Our last speaker is Erin Nicoletti.
Hi, I am Erin Nicoletti, and I'm a parent of two students at S U S D. Our schools are supposed to be a place of safety, kindness, acceptance, and education. Corinne Warner has made it clear that her agenda does not align with these principles, whether it's publicly mocking our hard-working staff, trying to stop a nationally-recognized history curriculum program selected unanimously by a committee of teachers, parents, a principal, and community members, or creating a complaint line to report teachers who teach lessons about something she's been told not to like. She's proven she has little interest in educating our children. It is people like Ms. Warner who is denying us our freedom to educate our children as we choose, and freedom to feel our children are safe within our school system, and frankly, our city. She is a bully. She does not align with the values of S U S D. She does not belong anywhere near our education system, and she should resign.
Thank you. I'll now refer to board members if they'd like to respond. Dr. Patinsky?
No, thank you.
Ms. Carney?
No, thank you.
I'd like, please, I'd like to make a comment. There is comments about the governing board, of which I'm a member. Thank you for all the community members, everyone for being here and sharing. This is, I'm happy to see the involvement. First, I'd like to share that I did ask our legal counsel about our ability to censure a board member, and I was informed that is not an option for school boards. So that is not something that we can put on the table. I do not condone the conduct of a board member, given what I heard at the board meeting on August 5th. I know what I heard, but only the speaker can know why she said what she said. This behavior does not reflect the board member ethics as adopted in Policy BCA, nor is it representative of S U S D's core values. Policy BCA includes a statement, "Governing board members shall safeguard public confidence and the integrity of the governance of the district by being honest, fair, caring, and respectful." Lastly, I want to thank everyone who spoke, students, parents, community members, who came here to share their viewpoint in this matter. Thank you. Next up, we have information discussion items in Section 7, and legal counsel has the floor. Yes.
Vice President Sharkey, members of the governing board in the cloud, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Wagner, we have six policies before you this evening for first reads. Ms. Carney and Dr. Patinsky, I do want to request that if you are cut off for any reason during this board meeting, or have difficulty with your technology, we do need to know so that we maintain a quorum. So if you could let Dr. Menzel know if that occurs during the remainder of our public board meeting. The first item is Governing Board Policy EB, which is about environmental and safety programs. The changes for all six of these policies are recommendations by the school board's policy provider, the Arizona School Board Association. Specifically with respect to this policy, it appears that there are some changes that have not been adopted in previous iterations of policy recommendations issuing from ASBA. So the language that I'm looking at right now, the general areas of emphasis, for instance, is from a former policy recommendation. But the language here concerning school safety programs is derived out of statutes that will be applicable on September 26th of this year. The recommendation from the legislature is to revise the school safety program and the school resource officer program to include additional requirements for school district to develop emergency response plans, to provide training, and to define school safety officers. So ASBA's recommendations concern the changes to those two statutes, ARS 15154 and a new statute, ARS 15154.02. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the proposed changes to Policy EB.
Any questions from board members?
Not for me, thank you.
Ms. Carney, are you still present?
I'm present, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sharkey, is it all right if I move on to the next agenda item?
Next item.
Okay. So the next governing board policy presentation is Governing Board Policy GCQF. This is concerning discipline, suspension, and dismissal of professional staff members. The statutory change is an amendment to ARS 15350, which will permit school districts to ask that the State Board of Education provide information from their files regarding investigations about staff members. So that is the change. But there were additional changes that were recommended, again by ASBA, that had not been previously adopted by the district. So I'm going to try to find that specific change, because it did have a choice, and I have made a recommendation for the board. It's right here. So in a student, in a staff member dismissal hearing, the board, the governing board can choose to hold the hearing themselves, or they can designate a hearing officer. The recommendation from legal counsel is that a hearing officer conduct the hearing, and so that is how the policy is reflected. Then the additional changes are listed right here, and this concerns the statutory change that I discussed before regarding the State Board of Education. Are there any questions regarding the proposed changes to Governing Board Policy GCQF?
Could you just add maybe two sentences on why that's your recommendation?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Patinsky. In my experience, and I have conducted due process hearings for the termination of a certificated staff member, I personally, in 30 years, have never held one before a governing board. It would require all of you to be present, to hear witness testimony, to make judgments regarding that witness testimony, and then to be present for the entirety of a hearing, which can take. The longest one that I've had has taken about two days. So that's a significant time commitment for a governing board member. What is more typical is to designate a hearing officer. The State Board of Education has a list of hearing officers, most are attorneys. And then that hearing officer would hear all the testimony, evidence, and make a recommendation to the board regarding whether termination of the certificated staff member is warranted. And so that is my recommendation, that you use a hearing officer rather than hear the hearing yourself. Ultimately, it is this governing board's determination whether to hire or fire staff. And so it would ultimately always be your decision with respect to that recommendation. But the actual hearing itself, it makes more sense to have a hearing officer do it.
Thank you. That's very clear.
Next governing board policy is IKF. This is your graduation policy. The district administration at this time is recommending only a procedural change. It's right here. This is concerning the change in statute, which will permit high schools to accept students' ACT scores if those scores are completed outside of the school district. And so the district would amend policy to recognize that assessment opportunity for students. The ACT scores would have to be submitted prior to the date that the district initiates testing. And Dr. Bono has conferred with, or excuse me, not Dr. Bono, your district data specialist has conferred with the ADE, and the students would have to take both the writing portion of the ACT exam and the ACT exam. So there are specifications that the State Board is issuing with respect to this requirement, this new requirement. The governing board policy IKF does not, has other changes that the district, again, your policy currently doesn't align to ASBA's current version. The background information indicates that this policy has been recommended for revision to the governing board a number of times. It is the district administration's intent that this procedural change be made at this time, and then the High School Planning Guide Committee will consider additional changes to bring forth that are more substantive at a later date this year.
Question, you said ACT, but if I recall correctly in the wording, it's any out-of-state assessment recognized by ADE. Was this done specifically for the ACT? And is there a chance that, you know, there's sort of unintended consequences of other assessments that we'd have to start assessing, accepting, and ratifying?
Vice President Sharkey, I think those rules will be determined by ADE, and at this time, there will be accepting an outside ACT score, because that's the examination that's given by the district. So I think that the statutory language was written to indicate a nationally-recognized exam as it's stated in the policy here that I've pulled up in case that the, there's a change to what is reviewed at the state level.
You don't feel there's a risk that there could be some other assessments that we are now forced to accept, or because of the wording, you feel that nationally-recognized is tight enough that we're not going to have any unintended effects here?
I don't think that you will, because I don't think that the State Board would allow you to accept, for instance, you know, some other examination. They may broaden it. They may broaden, there is, for instance, some examination that is given to students who are serving in the military, or who are, there's a military-recognized examination that I hadn't heard of before this year, that there's discussion about broadening those, but that would have to go through rulemaking with the State Board.
Thank you.
And it's my, I heard, at a recent event, heard the Executive Director of the State Board of Education indicate that they are going out for an RFP in the next year to look at the examination schedules. And it may be that the same exam is selected as the provider for the State Board.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is, Matthew, just a brief comment. As I've reported in prior board meetings, I'm on the board of ACT, and so I had hoped to abstain from anything that related to the ACT, whether there's an actual conflict or not. But given, you know, where we are with a quorum, I will vote on this, since I don't see any, you know, stretch of a conflict, given the substance of the policy. But I did want to go on record of mentioning my affiliation with ACT.
This is discussion item only, so no vote today.
Thank you. Oh, that's right. Thank you for the correction.
Dr. Patinsky, thank you for your caution. The next governing board policy for consideration is Governing Board Policy JLC. This is regarding student health requirements. There is an amendment to state law that is going to require any school district to provide information regarding healthcare services provided to students, information regarding the provider. So specifically, if they want to check the credentials of somebody, that parent or a legal guardian may. Additional change to state law will include that the district provide information regarding the types of training that any staff member has received, not just your healthcare staff. So those are the proposed changes to Governing Board Policy JLC. So those are the proposed changes to Governing Board Policy JLC. Any questions on that one? All right. Next up is Governing Board Policy JLCD. This is your policy that concerns the administration of medicines to students. There's been a change in Senate Bill 1440, changed statute to remove the words epinephrine auto-injector and to replace those with epinephrine delivery system. And so that are, that's the changes that we've recommended to this policy. In addition, as you'll see, there's some other cleanup changes that it appears that the district had not adopted in private, prior iterations of recommended policy revisions, and so those have been picked up in this proposed policy revision. Any questions regarding this item?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carney. I do want to note that I did review this with Renee Tosta, the district's head nurse on campus, and so she and I did make some additional revisions that differ from ASBA's proposed policy revisions, just to clean up and clarify some of the language in this. And if any board member wants to know, you know, specifically what those are, I can review and provide a black line. And then the final policy for your consideration tonight is a revision to Policy JLF. This is concerning reporting child abuse and child protection. The state law will change what information a Department of Child Safety caseworker has to present when visiting a campus. Specifically, they can be asked to confirm their identification, but you can't keep a digital record of their personal driver's license and/or identifying information. And so this proposed changes to JLF will incorporate that proposed statutory change. And I don't have anything further to prevent Mr. Sharkey, so...
Any other comments from the board?
We'll consider...
No, thank you.
We'll consider the second read and adoption in your October meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. McLennan, for your expertise in interpreting these new laws. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. There were no edits to it, so we are going to take a vote with the board on consent agenda items A through R. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Do I, I'll second that motion. Dr. Potinsky, your vote?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Aye.
And an aye from me. Passes 3-0. Next action item, number nine, is the approval of strategic plan, including KPIs and wildly important goals for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you, Vice President Sharkey, members of the governing board. You have in front of you in your, in your packet, and hopefully will be able to put up on the screen, the two wildly important goals that were the outgrowth of our conversation at the study session. We had started with versions that were a little bit different than what you see here today, and I want to talk about the reasons why we landed where we are here. And I'll also suggest that rather than taking final action this evening, we put it on the October 7th agenda for final approval so that all five board members can be present and weigh in on the wildly important goals. But we first talked about academic excellence, and mathematics was our area of focus. When you think about wildly important goals, one of the most important things to do is to identify what's the lever that will have the greatest systemic change in moving our organization forward. And when we look at our achievement scores, math is there, is an area of, that has been an area of concern and opportunity for improvement for a number of years. I want to clarify what the WIG states and what it doesn't state, because I think there are some misconceptions about that. So the WIG is by May of 2030, so in five years, we will increase from 25% to 75% of eighth graders successfully completing Algebra I or other advanced math coursework with an annual increase of 3% proficiency as measured by AASA. So the first thing that we're proposing is that we raise the expectations by creating opportunities for eighth grade students to successfully complete Algebra I or other advanced math coursework. That absolutely has an impact on the entire system, elementary, moving all the way up. But we have research and evidence from across the country with demographically diverse districts and students. We're moving in this direction by raising the bar at that level. Students have stepped up to those expectations and performed at levels that sometimes people aren't sure they can. Now, not everybody loves math, and part of our commitment as a district is to help everyone think of themselves as a mathematician or someone who is a math person. We don't just say, oh, you're not a reader, so you get to opt out of that. We also don't want people to think that they can opt out of math. What we want to do is build the skills intentionally from the very beginning of their experience in Scottsdale all the way through. And from a high school perspective, it doesn't mean that there won't be algebra at the high school. There'll be many students who may need to take it in ninth grade, but the movement towards doing as much as we can in eighth grade creates a different level of opportunity for students when they get to high school. So for those who want advanced math, they're going to be able to pursue that pretty aggressively. For those who are going to be able to satisfy their math requirements early because they do algebra in eighth grade, they can pursue other areas of interest and passions. And so there's a win-win for everyone in this. So it's raising the bar by moving the algebra expectation down to eighth grade and then doubling down on our support at the elementary level and the middle school level to achieve these outcomes. When it comes to the enrollment goal, we know that, that the bottom line, the funding for our district is driven by average daily membership, the number of students that we have. And we had a lot of conversation about what this might look like, and one of the data points that surfaced is the capture rate from in-boundary students, those who are school-aged that live within the boundaries of SUSD. The most recent demographic data from '22-'23 shows that our capture rate is about 55%. If you go back to 2010, our capture rate was about 71%. In that intervening period of time, we've seen an increase in the number of options for parents, from increase in charter schools, private and parochial options, and within the last few years, the expansion of the empowerment scholarship where parents can get ESAs. So we're swimming upstream when it comes to how we capture more of our school-age population. And yet, we think it's a really important, wildly important goal for the district. The question that I would have is we know that the bottom line is the number of students, whether or not they live within our district, if they're enrolled in our district, that makes a difference from a financial perspective. Looking at the preliminary data for this year, 25% of our current students are open-enrolled from out of district. 75% of our students are either in-boundary or they're open-enrolled, but they live within our district. And so 25% come from neighboring districts. That's a pretty significant number. So the question that I have, going back to our study session, is should this be a two-part enrollment goal that also acknowledges the impact of 25% of our enrollment being tied to out-of-district students and families choosing Scottsdale? Or do we simply focus on the increase of capture rate within boundary? Either way is acceptable from the administrative perspective, because we're not going to ignore the second one, but it's one of the questions that I was hoping that we could solidify in the conversation tonight before we bring back a final recommendation on October 7th.
Any comments from board members?
Yeah, I'm happy to go first. First off, I agree with waiting until our next meeting when we're all together and able to address it through even more deliberation. I want to applaud the district and the leadership for taking, for making the recommendation of a multi-year objective. I think hard things take time, and as we know, we've had, you know, incredible superintendent turnover, just had a lot of turmoil in our district. And so to be in a position where we can signal to the community around these two things that are very important to us, that we've got, you know, we've got a place that we're working towards getting to, and we're going to give ourselves time to make incremental progress, and we may not come out of the gate immediately. Some of these things, if you think about the ripple effect in math, of, you know, making improvements in elementary that then cascade to middle, that then cascade to high school. So I'm personally very supportive of shifting from an annual objective to a multi-year objective. On the question of math, I do think, and granted, this is a bias, and like I said, it's where I am right now in New York, attending an event around competency-based, personalized competency-based learning when it comes to math education. We know that so much of math, especially algebra, is based on predecessor skills, and these things kind of build. And so, you know, to say that someone is a seventh-grade math proficient, you know, that means that there's things they're grabbing from third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade and sixth grade, and if they didn't master one of those things, you know, then putting themselves and just focusing on getting to grade level as opposed to dealing with those predecessor skill deficiencies is probably not productive. So I still think, and would encourage us to spend a little bit of time reviewing whether there are more kind of skill-oriented, competency-oriented, gain-oriented metrics that we can put in place that are a little less grade-level centric and much more about just continuing to strengthen the ability of students to succeed in math, because, you know, as one of the speakers said, to have folks in eighth grade who cannot perform at that level obviously doesn't do anyone any good, but agree that math is the wig and agree in algebra in particular. And then on the enrollment capture rate, I was very vocal at the study session, and I respect my fellow governing board members who have a different perspective, one of which is in the room there, so I wonder who that could be. But I still focus more specifically on the capture rate. I think it's so critical that we draw our enrollments and our support from the district that also is going to be voting on overrides and so many other dimensions. And I don't love the idea that we're going to start, you know, quote-unquote, taking students from other public districts that are also dealing with their own enrollment growth goals, although obviously we want to serve all comers. So I really would keep us focused on the capture rate, and let's reverse this trend and have Scottsdale be the first choice of families in our district first and foremost. So thanks for the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you, Dr. Potinsky. Ms. Carney?
Yes, thank you. And I want to second, I was going to say exactly what Board Member Potinsky just said. I agree that I would like to see our focus beyond improving the capture rate of eligible in-boundary families. So I agree with that. I also want to know, are we going to be walking through the KPIs? Because we did not touch on those last meeting, and I didn't know if we are doing that tonight.
We can answer any specific questions you have about the KPIs, but we didn't have a planned presentation. And if we want a presentation on October 7th, we can be prepared for that. I was coming into the meeting with the expectation that we would table for final approval, knowing we didn't have all of the members in the room, but happy to talk about any specific KPI if there are questions.
Okay, great. Yeah, I do have a question on the optimized resources under increased student enrollment. I did have a concern on that. It shows 522-25, the SUSD K-11 enrollment is 18,657. Yet on Dr. Bachner's slide from the last meeting, her slide said that 522-25, the SUSD K-11 enrollment was 18,105. So that's a discrepancy of 552, and I'm just wondering, what am I missing?
We'll, we'll work with Dr. Bachner to confirm the correct number there. It could have been just a keying error, but we'll, we'll check and see, and we'll make sure that we have the number that ties out to what was, what's in her records. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Yeah, well, I know we had an issue with this same goal last year, and I just want to make sure that we, you know, get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. From my side, on the math, very cognizant of this balance of trying to raise the bar for our students, yet not set students up for failure. I know in the conversation, there was fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, so it's not just, you know, everything happens in eighth grade. This is a lead-up. So there's a couple of things in there on the progress indicators about fifth and sixth and percent of students in grades three, four, five accelerated. I would suggest to be maybe a little more explicit on those so that we know if we're on track or not, because we can see a couple of years coming through the pipeline. If we see those numbers not moving, then we know we're not going to hit the eighth-grade goal three years from now. So I think it'd be incumbent upon us to be a little more prescriptive on some of those numbers so that at least we can keep track. So that, I think, would be helpful with a long-term goal. On the enrollment side, I said this in the study session, the denominator we're going to use to calculate that, let's make sure we state where that's coming from, like if that's going to require a demographic study, because I know there's going to be a meeting a year from now and two years from now where my fellow board members and I are sitting and saying, did we meet the goal? And we have to calculate it with a numerator and a denominator, and if we don't know what that is for the capture rate, we're all going to be taking swag. So let's find that out now if that's going to cost us, because we have to do a demographic study. I just want to make sure we're very clear, because we've already calculated, did we hit this goal or not? And I don't want to be leaving that to chance or uncertainty when we calculate it. Any other comments?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to table the approval of strategic plan, including KPIs and wildly important goals for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Great. So we have a motion to table. Take a vote on it. Dr. Potinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me. 3-0 vote passes to table. Next item, 10, any future items? Board members, any topics proposed for future items?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Great.
Same.
Next is the dates for upcoming meeting. Our next meeting is September 30, 2025, 6:00 p.m., a special governing boarding, governing board meeting here at Coronado High School. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
We have a motion to adjourn. Dr. Potinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Aye.
Aye from me. 3-0 to adjourn. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.